Welcome to the Charlton Board of Selectmen's Meeting, August 14th, 2018. We're starting a little bit later, it's about twenty of seven. Would everybody please rise to say the pledge? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. So, tonight we have minutes for the regular meeting, July 17th, that need to be approved. Minutes of the special meeting for July 24th that need to be approved. Community relations announcements in open forum. Appointments and resignations. We have an appointment for the Assistant Animal Control Officer, a resignation and an appointment for the Zoning Board of Appeals, a resignation for the Facilities Technician. We have scheduled appointments at 6:45, we have Northeast Energy Center. At seven o'clock, we have Four Score Inc., Marijuana Continued. At 7:15, we have Building Commissioner Curtis Meskis, one on the Chapter 61 process update, and two for declaration of a vehicle as surplus. At 7:30, we have Green Gold Group Incorporated, formerly Healthwise Foundation Inc., amendments to the Community Host Agreement for 46 Worcester Road. Under new business, secondary job requests per the Charlton Permanent Firefighters Association. We have a Civic Plus contract for the website vendor. Information Technology Technician approved the job description and advertised. Site plan modification for Ted's Package Store. CMRPC, we need appointment of a delegate and an alternate. And number six, setting a meeting for the Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives. Under old business, we have the Town Administrator's Contract. We then move on to committee reports, Board of Selectmen Policy Review, the Town Administrator's Report, and other business unknown at the time of posting. The next regular Selectmen's Meeting, I believe this is incorrect, it says September 11th, I think it should be August 28th.
That was set today, so yes.
Yes. The next regular Selectmen's Meeting is supposed to be August 28th, 2018. With that, do we have a motion for the minutes of the regular meeting, July 17th?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffarovich.
I move that we accept the July 17th regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Selectmen Noble abstained. Minutes of the special meeting for July 24th, 2018.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffarovich.
I move that we accept the July 24th special meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Under announcements, absentee ballots are now available for state primary being held Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Heritage School. Download an application by going to www.townofcharlton.net and mail or bring to the town clerk's office at 37 Main Street or stop by the office during regular business hours. A ballot will be mailed to you if you would like. If you are unenrolled, need to specify which ballot you would like, Republican, Democratic, or Libertarian. The Treasurer's Office, the Treasurer Collector's Office will be closed from Tuesday, August 14th, 2018, through Thursday, August 16th, 2018, for training. Old Home Day, Monday, September 3rd, 2018. Visit the townofcharlton.net website for all the activities that are going to take place. Is anybody here for open forum?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lemansky.
Thank you for letting me have this brief time here. What I'd like to state here is that on March 27th, 2017, an article was published in the Worcester Telegram by Ms. Lplaka. It was because of this article, the Charlton Board of Selectmen commissioned a forensic audit to investigate allegations made in the article. On September 25th, a series of emails went back and forth and the draft, the draft audit was sent to our town administrator and a few questions were asked, such as, did you complete a list of possible real violations or do you leave that up to the state agencies based on facts? So then it went on and then finally the draft was then reworked and the final report was submitted on September 25th, 2017. On October 11th, at a regular Selectmen's Meeting, John Sullivan, the author of the forensic audit, came to the Selectmen's Meeting and gave the report. And after the end, at the end of the report, the Selectmen determined that this report needed to be forwarded to the District Attorney's Office, the AG's Office, and Ethics. And at that meeting, there was no real discussion about what, about any comments to the report. On the 16th of October, John Sullivan sent clarification to the Board of Selectmen's Office to clarify statements made in the public hearing. I found this rather interesting when John made the statement. My response included our position that I've stated in here, whether you like it or not. If the line is in the middle of the road, the town owns it. And that document was a page and a half long of clarifications. In November, November 13th, there was again a series of emails that went back between Ms. Lplaka and our town administrator. And Ms. Lplaka requested clarification regarding the published Malinsen Health Audit summary data, September 25th. The first paragraph in page 12 says, "However, there are instances where the allegations are not accurate based on evidence reviewed." And again, this was Ms. Lplaka looking for clarification, exactly, you know, what did John Sullivan mean by that? And Ms. Craver wrote back that asking for the clarification as to something in the study that involves the news story that started the audit. Again, the news story that started the audit. And Mr. Sullivan wrote back, "The question from the press is fear and I will provide an answer today or tomorrow." But he headed off, he headed his statement, "Seems like this will never end." Seems like this will never end. So then, on November-
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Joe.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, did you have a point?
Yeah, point's coming. It's coming. If, 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 the point is, this is information, but I won't get into that. Here's the point. The point is, on November 15th, again, addressed to the town administrator, Town of Charlton's, this is two and a half pages, two and a half pages typed, a total of eight lists of inaccuracies in the newspaper, that this board, with the exception of Ms. Speewett, based your judgment of spending $5,000 to do an investigation when you find out later on that it was so inaccurate that there shouldn't have been an investigation. But here's the good news. The good news is, is that he gave the report, listed the inaccuracies, and then on December 8th, the AG's Office had reported, excuse me, the District Attorney's Office reported, they have nothing to do with the request that the town asked, that this should go to the Attorney General's Office and the State Ethics. On July, excuse me, January 30th, at a Selectmen meeting, I think it was seven, maybe eight, 8:15 or whatever during the night, it was reported in the, I believe it was in the, it was in the Administrator's Report, that the District Attorney and the AG's Office have both determined they will not be opening any cases. Now, this is July 30th. July 31st, there was an article in the newspaper about water contaminants, but nothing, nothing after having four articles, especially the first one on Sunday's front page, that the AG's Office and the District Attorney's Office take an election. Nothing. Then on April, excuse me, at that meeting, it was reported that the, that the answer from Ethics was, they had not made a determination and they would not confirm or deny what they were working on. On April 11th, it was written and then received by the Selectmen's Office that from, from the Ethics, this is Brian McWilliams, who's a special investigator, "We have determined this matter does not warrant a public resolution or imposition of formal sanctions." So this is what Ethics is now saying. Did Lemansky get a copy? No. In fact, I ended up getting this letter through my attorney, who got it from the TNG attorney. I don't know how the TNG attorney got it, but this is how we received a copy of it. Then, then on May 8th, the Charlton Board of Selectmen, and this is a released document of executive session, under litigation update and legal status, the fourth bullet item here is Lemansky, closed by Ethics. Closed by Ethics. Now, I have an issue with this and we'll talk about that in a second. So, May 8th, so here we are, what are we, close to over 90 days later? Has this been reported in the newspaper? Has the Selectmen called up Mr. Lemansky and said, geez, for your own information, we're just going to let you know, because maybe you might be thinking about this? The, and the, I guess the last thing, well, not the last thing, before I leave this here with the close, with the Ethics. I will be tomorrow filing with the state open meeting law that this subject should not have been an executive session and should not have been under litigation update legal status. Because I have no legal, legal cases going on with the town right now. A little different story with the writer in the Telegram Gazette for defamation, but I do not have anything with the town and this should not have been, been put that way. And just for those who may be unaware of this, but the final recommendation on the, of the forensic audit was, was on page 20. "We recommend a sewer extension on North Sturbridge Road be brought up to requirements and accepted by the town." That has since been done. The Board should also develop a policy on Ethics and should be distributed and signed by all Board members. Those were the recommendations. And then they also put together a punch list of a water sewer extension and application. So for Lemansky, the good news is, is one, two, three punches, is AG's Office, District Attorney's Office, and Ethics. They said, you know, we're all set. They're not doing anything. And, and I guess, not I guess, but this last document that I have, I have it redacted here, but this is an affidavit. This is an affidavit from a public official, and the public official said, "During the month of March 2017, I received a phone call from Deb LaPaca from the Worcester Telegram Gazette. She informed me she was working on a story about North Sturbridge Road sewer extension and had some questions for me. We spoke for 15 minutes. At the end of her interview, Deb LaPaca stated that the malfeasance that she was led to believe does not appear to be here. I asked who was pushing the issue, Kevin Papos? And she said, no, Robin Craver was pushing the issue." That's all I have. Thank you for your time and I appreciate the ability to come and follow you.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Mr. Lally, I believe you were next.
I brought reinforcements.
I'm Jenny Frasella. I live up at the Oval and we have the Old Home Day Committee. I'm in charge of the brochure, which we just finished up today. And as Old Home Day is coming up within the next couple of weeks, Kathleen, our chair and treasurer, likes to have the names that we've selected for the award ceremony at this meeting, so this is one of the reasons we're here, one of them. Okay, ready? Citizen of the Year, Aaron Anderson. Honorary Parade Marshals, Roland and Nancy Jackson. Community Service Award, Judy Mascol. Community Service Award, Gail Stokes. Am I going too fast? Okay. Community Service Award, Frank Galord. Community Service Award, Karen Fiero. Community Service Award, Brenna Anne Larson. Youth Service Award, Cutter Beck. Business Award this year to Advantage Enterprises, Matt Gagnon. We also have some new things coming in this year. We have a stilt walker. We have the pony rides, oh, you can have that one. And I do have a copy of the brochure. It'll probably be printed this week. I just got it from the person I've been working with. But we have a lot of interesting events. The fireworks are on Saturday night. There will be some road closings and changes, one-way traffic from 3:00 to 5:00, and then at 5:00, that Masonic Home Road is closed off for the fireworks. But the handicap people can in park near the St. Agnes Guild. The other things are pretty much normal, what we've had. You want to tell about some of the other activities?
If I have to.
You do.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to say good evening and I want to extend a thank you to all the donors who are making this day possible. Every year, they step up to the plate. I've caught up with most of them. There's a few yet that I've got to tally up with. And it is phenomenal, the volunteers and the cause on this town, really. We're going to have, again, Jim Barvier has the frog jumping contest back on track. We're having the Highlanders, which is a very gala event down below with all the Highland Games. And for the first time, we're having the pony rides from Blessings Farm. Now, they were up at the Blueberry Festival and it was a great success, and if it's anything like that, it'll be great to have. It'll be a great addition to the Old Home Day event. The banner is up and we're on track, pretty much. So any spreading of the word or the news that you can do. And again, like I say, a big thank you to all the people that are making this possible.
Mike, thank you. And thank you so much for all the stuff you people do with the Old Home Day Committee. It would not happen without you.
Don't volunteer.
I appreciate it.
Lots of events for the children on that day.
Excellent. I know the Highlanders was a big plus last year.
It was a big plus this year. And if people want to know more about it, they can go on the Town of Charlton website, Old Home Day Committee, and get the information.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you there.
You got it.
With that, anybody else for open forum? Chief?
We're here today to recognize one of our own firefighter, Brian Curtis. We go back to an event in Millbury on July 6th of this year, where the Town of Charlton's dive team was called to Millbury for an incident of a missing kayaker. Charlton being one of 25 communities within District 7, we have a large contingent of our people that are on the dive team. Brian responded and we've gotten letters from the Millbury Police Department Chief, the Millbury Fire Department Chief, as well as the family of the victim. And in particular, from the family, Brian was singled out and recognized for his work. Unfortunately, it was a tragic event, but as the family said, Brian was able to bring a sense of closure to the family. So we thought that was worthy and if I could have Brian come up. It's just a certificate of recognition that's awarded to Brian Curtis for exemplary service as a member of the District 7 Dive Team and the Charlton Fire Department during an incident in the town of Millbury dated July 6th, 2018. Your selfless dedication and effort to serve the people of Massachusetts provided a sense of closure to the family during this tragic event. Nice work.
Short and sweet, that's all I got. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you so much, Chris. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mrs. Castigian?
Please. Hi. Kristen Castigian. I have a brief request, here to respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen vote to set the ballot referendum in light of the special town meeting vote on August 1st.
So what's happening with that, Kristen, is the, our legal counsel will be here at our next meeting, which is August 28th, and that will be an agenda item then.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
August 28th.
August 28th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else for open forum? It's been a busy night at open forum. Okay, appointments and resignations. Ms. Craver.
Yes, sir. As you know, the position of Assistant Animal Control Officer has been vacant. After the required job posting, subsequent interviews were held by Chief Maxfield and Animal Control Officer Ann Saloo. Attached is a letter from Chief Maxfield recommending the appointment of Kathleen Flynn as the Assistant Animal Control Officer. Ms. Flynn has been the full-time animal control officer in Oxford since 2012. She has also filled in on a temporary basis for the Town of Southbridge and here in Charlton. She's completed the Massachusetts Animal Control Corps competency training, as well as the Reserve Intermittent Police Academy. She has a degree in animal science from the University of Massachusetts at Amherst. I would recommend the Board make the appointment.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffarovich.
I move that we appoint Ms. Flynn as the Assistant Animal Control Officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Noble.
I have known Ms. Flynn in a professional capacity, seeing as she and I both worked for the Town of Oxford, and I can attest to her work ethic, her knowledge, and her ability to handle difficult situations at all levels. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I can add a couple of things to that. I know that the Town of Oxford is blessed to have Ms. Flynn doing their animal control work over there. She's a very compassionate person, always has done, probably gone far beyond trying to deal with difficult situations and make things work for everybody, just like your father. So with that, we have motion. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Craver, resignation and appointment for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Ready to go. Disappeared on me. Hold on. Thank you. We've been notified by the Zoning Board of Appeals that Barry Fisher has resigned his position as of July 10th. This open position has been running on cable and the town's website as required. There is a need to fill this position immediately. The Zoning Board is recommending that the Board make the appointment of alternate member Shane Woodson as a full member. You are asked to accept the resignation of Barry Fisher as of July 10th and appoint Shane as a full member on the Zoning Board of Appeals. A letter thanking Mr. Fisher for his time is in your sign folder and we will post the alternate opening as required.
Okay. Do we have motion to accept the resignation of Barry Fisher from the ZBA?
I move that we accept the resignation of Mr. Fisher from the ZBA.
Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a motion on Shane Woodson?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept Shane Woodson as a full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Craver, resignation?
Yes, sir. Attached is a letter of resignation from our Facilities Technician, Lucas Bodett. A letter thanking him for his time is in your sign folder and you are asked to accept his resignation. We are working to find a temporary assistance while the job is being posted.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffarovich.
I move that we accept Mr. Bodett's resignation.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Craver, a little bit late, 6:45 appointment with Northeast Energy Center.
Yes, sir. On March 29th, Liberty Utilities, now Northeast Energy Center, had met with the Board regarding a natural gas distribution system in Charlton, where they would tie into the Tennessee Tech gas pipeline. At that time, they were seeking a letter of support from the Board. As directed, Deborah Chikorini, Director of Assessing, and myself have been working with Northeast Energy Center since December 2016. Today, the Board has not given a letter of support for this project. This company has changed hands and the new owners have asked to come to introduce themselves and update the Board.
Would it be okay to put a visual over here?
Sure. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. And thank you for the opportunity you asked to come in and meet with you.
Thank you for coming forward.
For the record, I'm Dan Bailey. I'm counsel for the project. I work at the Boston Law Firm with Pierce Atwood, and I'll let Tom do his own introductory production.
Thank you. My name is Tom Wine. I'm the President of Northstar Industries, and I'm here representing Northeast Energy Center, the owners of the project. And just as a bit of background, Northstar had the honor and pleasure of providing the only LNG plant in Massachusetts, and there are 16 that actually meet and exceed the current standards for safety and transmission of natural gas in Massachusetts. So it occurred to us around 2014 that the Commonwealth needed some additional energy resources. So we began the process of looking for communities, as well as contracts for the local distribution companies in Mass to supply them LNG. We, through the help of the Commonwealth of Mass and citizens of this community, we identified a site at approximately 129 Sturbridge Road. It's on the Charlton Line. It's a 220-acre site owned by Dan Proudie. The site has some fantastic characteristics. It's in very close proximity to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline, which will supply the facility with raw material natural gas for us to liquefy and distribute for the benefit of the citizens of Mass. So the project, at around 2015, secured its initial contracts. It took about a year and a half to get those projects approved, those contracts for natural gas supply approved in the Commonwealth of Mass, and for the new partners, Liberty Energy Trust, to secure 100% ownership simultaneously in that process. So I just want to mention- Let me start with the big picture first, because one of the strong messages that we have is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has the most stringent safety requirements in the world, essentially, for liquefying natural gas. I mentioned in some public here, at some public forums before, that the Massachusetts requirement requires us to far exceed the thermal radiation. In the unlikely event of a situation occurring at the plant, the regulations of Mass far exceed the federal requirements, and this site is, this 220-acre site far exceeds the requirements of Massachusetts. In other words, in the unlikely event that we had a problem with our facility, people could stand at the property lines and be in no harm's way. So our intention, from a point of view of safety, is to meet or exceed all the requirements, federal, state, and local, as far as environmental, the same. So I've mentioned some benefits, the process that we're about to embark in, the approval process will take approximately six months. The, we expect that the plant could be in operation within the next 24 months if all things go the way they should, and we're going to be very transparent. We want to work with the community, we want to work with the town, and provide a successful project for all.
Tom, could you just walk the board and the public through the elements of the facility? Because it, you know, it's, you and I are close to this plan, but it's kind of hard to, a little too close to it. It's a little hard to follow it.
Well, I appreciate that coaching. The Tennessee Gas Pipeline is actually two pipelines. There's a 24-inch and a 30-inch pipeline, and Northstar spends a lot of its time in the past 20 years connecting parties to that, to those pipelines, and doing work on these pipelines. And Tennessee Gas is one of our best customers. So this is a very, this is a fantastic location to install the source of LNG. So the first thing we need, and we purchased this site at the intersection of the Tennessee Gas Pipelines, where we'll install a metering and regulating station. And the intent is to run a 1.3-mile, 6-inch pipe to feed our natural gas facility. And what we'll do with that facility is, when we move water, because water freezes, if we liquefy this gas at minus 260 degrees Fahrenheit, when we move carbon dioxide, because carbon dioxide also freezes at about minus 50. So we'll pre-treat the gas, and we have a large refrigerator on the site, essentially. Now I'm going to show you the rendering, if you will. So natural gas comes in through the facility from the south. The natural gas is pre-treated, as I said, it then passes through a refrigerator, and basically we have the minimum, minimum amount of storage that we need to operate. So we have about five days of production, storage on-site, operational storage, if you will, and we'll truck about 12 truckloads of LNG to other gas companies in New England that use this product during cold winter months, because we don't have enough pipeline capacity in Massachusetts to feed our gas companies in the wintertime. So there are 16 other LNG plants in Mass, and several of those will receive product from this new facility. Currently, natural gas, liquefied natural gas comes to the United States through, locally through a project in Boston that folks know as GDF-SUEZ, NG, a number of names over the years. In some cases, it's self-produced at LNG plants, in other cases, it comes in via truck from Canada. So, so this is a local solution that we believe will primarily benefit the citizens of Mass and provide low-cost, clean energy for Massachusetts, and potentially lower electric costs in the state as well. But, thank you. So I'll mention also, the site footprint here is about 11 acres. So we're going to occupy approximately 11 acres on the top of the plateau in that site, and we did all the environmental, safety, sound, even visual studies. So it's our intent that you won't see the facility, hence the low profile, you won't hear the facility, and we intend on not being a burden on your infrastructure. We're not going to burden your schools. We're even installing our own water tank, so we can have an adequate supply of stored water. We're not asking for you to upgrade any water pipelines. And one final benefit, it's our intention to install, to apply for a franchise, to supply local gas locally to the community, because we think that's another great benefit as well. That's kind of the highlights of the story. I know when I get in the road, I'll start, I'll think about other things that I wanted to say, but you all know how to get in touch with us, and if questions come up from the community.
I'm just doing this for Drew.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we have continued to work with safety officials, all, various departments in the town, and that will, that'll occur right through operations. I will mention, too, that we encourage and we are offering to take the local first responders to the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy, where I believe we have the best LNG and propane firefighting school in the country, so.
If I could just jump in very briefly. First of all, I want to apologize for Jake Deigle, who's the project manager, who sat in the Philadelphia Airport all day today. And so, you know, Tom and I are, we were going to be here, but we were going to be more sitting in the back, and Jake was going to be in the lead. He's been taking the lead with Ms. Craver. I also wanted to mention that I have met with Jake, and with your building inspector, and with the interim town planner to talk about this project. One of the procedural issues will be, we'll be applying for all the typical local permits locally, except for zoning. Energy facilities are, you know, have an exemption available under 48A Section 3, that you can petition the Department of Public Utilities for an exemption from the zoning bylaw. The LNG storage facility is actually allowed use in the industrial general zoning district and the agricultural zoning district in which we're in, but there are a couple of inconsistencies. Not surprising, because zoning bylaws typically aren't crafted for energy facilities. The, your bylaw requires that the tanks be underground, and we're not proposing underground. We're also going to be at a probably 40 to 42-foot height, and your, the, the height limitation in Charlton is 36 feet. And then the last one is, there are a bunch of them, but the last one is, we've got multiple buildings on a single lot. And as I read your bylaw, it's not entirely clear that you can have multiple buildings on a single lot. It's really kind of set up for one building, one lot, the way most bylaws are. So we will file that petition with the Department of Public Utilities. There will be a public hearing held by the Department of Public Utilities in Charlton. The other thing that we've committed to and have spoke with Ms. Craver about is, we would be willing to go through a voluntary site plan review process, which is very much akin to your regular site plan review process. It just wouldn't, you know, be under the zoning bylaw, but we'd give notice to all of the abutters, we'd provide all the materials that the planning board would normally look for, and any conditions or terms that came out of that process, we would memorialize in a development agreement.
Excellent. Board have any questions?
Oh, definitely. How close are the nearest abutters to this facility?
750 feet, give or take.
Okay. Have you done traffic studies?
We have.
Okay, and, and what were the results of the traffic studies?
The results, the traffic study, it was done by Judith Nitsch in Engineering. It looked at levels of, you know, typical levels of service, both at a site drive, which will be on Route 20, as well as at down the street at, I think it's the Route 20, is it section, Route 49?
Yes.
Yeah, 49 intersection. And the levels, you know, they did the usual projections out of seven years, one, assume 1% growth per year, and the projections for levels of service are the same in 2025 with or without the facility, so same for build and no build. They're mostly in the Cs. There's one D, I think it might be, it's probably a left turn at that, you know, Route 20, 49 intersection at an evening peak. And, you know, I remember from the study, and I, you know, I'm way out over my skis here talking about traffic, but I did read the study, that mornings were much better than afternoons. Morning peaks, you know, sort of 7 to 9, afternoon peaks, 4 to 6, there was more traffic.
How many employees do you expect to be here on a daily basis? Will it be staffed 24/7? I'm assuming it would be, it would be staffed there 24/7. So approximately, how many employees do you think you'll have per shift?
What we envision is at least 270 days a year during this liquefaction season, we're providing liquid to the gas companies.
Right.
There would be at least three people on per shift, three eight-hour shifts, so nine people during the course of the day, some days more. I, I don't expect much less. So nine people, three shifts, so three, three people per eight-hour shift as a minimum for 270 days a year. And then, it's, if we're not liquefying, it's not, in Massachusetts and other states, these facilities are typically not manned 24/7 when you're not in operation.
Okay.
But we were monitored 24 hours a day by, remotely.
Okay. And the construction period, how long do you expect that to take, if all things go smoothly?
Sure. We're expecting that off and on a 12-month period, initial site clearing, roadways, off-site prefabrication. So again, we expect, we're attempting to have a six-month approval process at the state level, and we're, we're hoping to be in service within 24 months from today.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else need further questions? Karen?
I actually had a question for the board. So on March 29th, you met with this group, or they came before, but no letter was provided after. Again, I was elected in May, I'm just trying to catch up, so.
Well, this is March 29th of 2016. So this is.
This is.
So I wasn't here either.
They have name changes and principal changes and things like that. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll ask Ms. Craver to step in here.
Certainly. I think you said it quite eloquently. They've been going through a process. They've not, not ever disappeared, so to speak. They've been kind of working through. I would get calls every six months or so saying, "We're still working, we're doing this," or, you know, giving us an update. A couple of the things that I don't think got said was, they did do a, hold a public meeting downstairs in the senior center, which was very well attended, and for those people who are at home watching this, if it sounds familiar, this is the same project. I think it was well, well done and well received by the, the neighbors coming in, the people coming in. Originally, the other company had wanted a pilot, and that was, we had had some conversations on that. Subsequently, we've had some conversations, and we're having more productive conversations about the taxes, and I'm glad to hear that he's reporting to you that they'll be paying taxes, and, and we'll be looking at a franchise fee and, you know, land development type fee. So I think we're on the road, I think they're here now, and they're gearing up, and it's, it's an exciting project.
Do you need a motion from us to go into negotiations with them?
No, sir. You've already directed me to do that. So basically, we just wanted to get them back on your radar, and to re, to let you know that the names have changed, some of the faces have changed, but the project is still going forward.
And, and just, you wanted to come in and, and, you know, give you a heads up that we will be filing, probably within the next week, with the energy facility siting board and with the DPU, and of course, you'll be copied, you know, we have obligations to provide, you know, multiple copies of those filings, and we will.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
And that is an important piece that they wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it. Okay. Ms. Craver? Four score.
Yes, sir. At the board's July 17th meeting, Four Score Incorporated had come before the board to discuss their proposal. It was recommended to hold negotiations until tonight's meeting, when the board determines the direction for the town administrator.
Gentlemen?
Good evening. For the record, Dan Glisman, attorney with Principal Bel-Tai, here on behalf of Four Score. We didn't prepare any presentation for this evening's meeting. We're happy to update the board on our progress. We've recently filed a special permit application with the planning board. We expect to be, we hope to be on the September 5th planning board agenda, and the, at this point, the, since we've held our community meeting already, the host agreement is the next hurdle for us in order to start our state licensing process, so we're eager to get started at the, at the board's will with the negotiations on this project. So, thank you.
So, we are two.
So I guess I would ask, what is the board, board's wishes? They would like to have a host community agreement with the town for growing at this point. If we stay, as you know, at the special town meeting, the Article 27, marijuana zoning bylaw was not repealed or changed at that meeting. So they are, my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you are seeking a host community agreement with the town for cultivation?
Yeah, that's correct. It'll be, and that's the same application that we filed with the planning board. Technically speaking, it'll be the cultivation, production, and transportation license.
And not, and not including sales?
That's correct. No retail component.
So if the board wishes to move forward with that, and you would like me to negotiate a host agreement with them, I would be glad to.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safarovich.
This would be the second available growing license in town under the zoning bylaw?
Yes, sir. And actually, it would be the last.
Okay. Then I would move that we authorize town administrator entering negotiations with Four Score Incorporated?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
Hi.
Hello.
I wasn't at the meeting, unfortunately. So I'm sorry, missed your presentation. What location are you looking to put your site at?
It's 144 Stirbridge Road. It's approximately 20,000 square foot vacant industrial building. It was previously occupied as.
Outfords Inc.
Yeah, an auto body plate shop, and then prior to that, it was a lumberyard. That's correct.
Yep. That's across from the entrance to go up to.
Do you have the picture of the front of that?
Yeah, actually, and I also have, I believe I should have a set of plans. I'd be happy to.
That would be very good.
It's this team here.
Three of the five are here tonight. I'm Michael Curtis, managing member of the LLC. Dan Glisman, the principal belt. Curtis Smith, Matthew McGeorge, who's an architect out of Rhode Island, and a gentleman named Tim St. Germain, who's a senior executive at a Connecticut engineering company.
And I just delivered a copy of the presentation deck that we presented to both the board and the community at our community meeting and follow-up board selection meeting, together with a copy of the plans.
Do you need this back?
What was that?
It's approximately twenty thousand square foot vacant industrial building. It was previously occupied as a, yeah, an auto body plate shop, and then prior to that, it was a lumberyard. That's correct.
It's across from the entrance to go up to Hurridge.
Do you have the picture of the front of it?
Yeah, actually, and I also have, I believe I should have a set of plans, I'd be happy to.
That would be very good. So who are the, who are the principals of Four Score Inc.?
It's this team here.
Three of the five are here tonight. I'm Michael Curtis, managing member of the LLC.
Okay.
Dan Glisman, the principal of L. Kurt Smith. Matthew McGeorge, who's an architect out of Rhode Island. And a gentleman named Tim Saint Germain, who's a senior executive at a Connecticut engineering company.
And I just delivered a copy of the presentation deck that we presented to both the board and the community at our community meeting and follow-up board selection meeting, together with a copy of the plans. What was that?
Do you need this back?
No, no, please.
No choice.
Good, thank you. So you want to open up a grow facility?
That's correct.
Have any of you done this before?
So a little bit about my background. It's a question that we love to answer, actually, so thank you. So I'm an attorney, and I've been working in the cannabis space here in Massachusetts pretty much since its inception. The law firm that I, that I work for, we permitted the first facility in downtown Boston for medical marijuana. That sort of got us started on sort of a cannabis industry niche, niche practice at Prince Lavelle. Since that time, we've worked with a number of companies in the space here in Massachusetts, in various municipalities, all across the Commonwealth, including a number of facilities in the state of Boston. Most recently, my clients were awarded one of the first retail licenses for the adult use in the state. You know, we've been working closely with the Cannabis Control Commission and the Department of Public Health throughout the licensing process, including, you know, commenting on the draft regulations and statute, and working closely with the legislature, legislators as well. I would also actually want to bring up Kurt Smith from Fussin' O'Neill, because I believe that his background is, can't be topped by anyone in the state, so Kurt, you want to?
Hi.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Selecting Noel. So we, my company, Fussin' O'Neill.
Can you pick the?
Yeah, sure, I'll say. I've been working in the, in the medical cannabis space nationwide for the last three years. So we do a lot of, you know, pre-construction planning, permitting, design, construction management, and operational compliance of all these facilities. We're very well-versed in cultivation and extraction. We work with communities all over the country, and cultivators and manufacturers of marijuana products. This would be, this would be my first business as a licensed cultivator. However, you know, we have many examples of our work. We understand these facilities intimately, and, and so we have quite a bit of experience in, in not only, you know, helping these businesses start up, but the compliant and secure operation of these facilities.
Okay. So I, I hear from a lot of people that they're very concerned about odor. They're very concerned about the unsightliness. So obviously, that's something that you directly address.
We do, we do. You know, our goal, when we work with our clients, is to make sure that the facilities that produce and manufacture cannabis products are, are not unsightly, are complying with all local bylaws. And, and we like to educate, you know, the communities that we, we, we work with to help these facilities get going, understand how, you know, how to address odor, what we're going to do inside the building. And, and, you know, so if you've looked at one forty-four Sturbridge Road, you know, our, it's, it's like a red, brickish type basin rebuilding. And, and so, you know, we help with landscaping plans and, and site planning and parking, circulation, et cetera, so.
If I might just add, we're not making any changes to the exterior of the building, apart from appropriate signage. And then we'll be, you know, restriping the parking lot to accommodate employees. And, you know, we would certainly welcome any recommendations for landscaping suggestions. We expect that to be something that comes out in the planning board process.
Most definitely, and I know that the CCC has very stringent criteria when it comes to signage and shrubbery.
That's right, that's right. You know, with respect to, to actually what you're allowed to use in terms of the logo, to, you know, not having shrubbery where folks can potentially hide behind or, you know. But you're correct, thank you.
And how many people do you expect to employ here?
We hope, we hope up to twenty people. And, and we may, you know, we may be able to, we're looking at how much office space we have, and we might be able to go up as high as twenty-five. Some of the, you know, some of the facility will be purely cultivation, and some will be manufacturing. And so we think we need about ten to fifteen people in the, in the cultivation space. And then we need another, another few people for the laboratory, which is where extraction and manufacturing would happen, and a couple of administrative staff.
Sorry, I just had another point.
Yes.
Typically, we talk, when we talk about employees for these types of facilities, we talk with a ratio of one to a thousand square feet.
Right.
So we have a twenty thousand square foot building, we anticipate about twenty employees. Although, this would be the, you know, the main headquarters and office space for this company, so depending on how large the sales force gets, things like that.
It could be a few others that are on the road.
Hopefully.
Okay, and, you know, as part of the host agreement, we may tuck a little local preference in there when it comes to hiring?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Very much in favor of that.
Okay. How many trucks do you expect to be coming and going from the facility, once you're fully up and running and functional?
Once we're fully up and running, you know, one thing will depend on how many retail locations we would serve. So those, those locations have not been settled yet, and neither has the number. However, deliveries of supplies and things like that, we can expect, we can expect a few trucks a week. I actually have, we've, we've, we pulled the, we pulled the traffic planning together, and that is, that's with Bill Scanlon. So that information is available to you. I wouldn't be able to speak to the numbers directly, but I have a meeting with him tomorrow morning at nine-thirty.
Okay, then I can, I can follow up with him.
Yeah.
Please do, yes.
Full package prepared and submitted a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
And again, I apologize for not being at the meeting on the seventeenth, and I appreciate your indulgence in my questions.
Very nice to meet you.
Any other questions?
Actually, just a question. Do we still have the fabulous presentation that you did offer that evening on our website? No, but it was very informative, is that still up on our website?
And I'm assuming it's best.
It is, so just for people watching, and anyone interested can go back. I was able to attend that meeting, I thought it was very well-done. I only heard actually positive feedback, the size, your location, your willingness to answer the questions people had that evening. So I thank you for that. And I wanted to reiterate again that this would not be, you would not be selling recreational marijuana for this.
We're not applying for it.
The food.
With that, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Kurt, we're going to ask you to hold for one minute. Brian, Mr. Chicorelli, could you come forward? Or what? We won't make you wait any further, Brian, there's no need.
Yeah.
Chief?
Yes, sir. Attached is a request from Brian Chicorelli, seeking approval to work a secondary job for Antos Lawn Care and Indian Ranch, where he will be cutting and weed-whacking lawns, as well as working security at the front gate, scanning people for weapons. According to the fire contract, personnel must obtain permission from the fire chief and the board of selectmen to work a secondary job. Chief Knopf has approved of the request. Mr. Chicorelli has been notified that this will be discussed at tonight's meeting, as he is here, and I would recommend the board approve this request.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
To the chair?
Ms. Noble.
I make a motion that we approve the request for the secondary job for Mr. Chicorelli.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Brian, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Congratulations on the job.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Meskis?
The building commissioner Meskis is here tonight for two items. Chapter sixty-one process update at the board's July seventeenth meeting. During a discussion of chapter sixty-one A removal request, there was an error in the process that the request to remove was not processed prior to the project. We were asked to review the process and provide an update of how to approach this, so it does not happen again. Mr. Meskis, our building commissioner, along with Debbie Chicorini, our principal assessor, Bill Scanlon, our planner, and Joanne, our treasurer-collector, in a joint effort, worked to resolve this issue. The following is their response to some past issues with forest, agriculture, horticulture, and recreational land governed by real property laws. They offer the following procedures, procedural processes now in place. For any project, it is the landowner's applicant's responsibility to comply with all applicable laws and regulations, including but not limited to, chapter land issues, sign-offs from the board of health, water sewer department, for example, or the payment of back taxes or fees, which we cover under Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-seven. A law which requires the collector's office to sign off on permits or licenses issued by any agent of the town, with few exceptions. A landowner who wishes to place land or keep a parcel under chapter sixty-one A, Section six, sixty-one B, Section three, which is agriculture or open space and recreation, has to apply annually to the board of assessors for the designation and provide information that supports the application. In the case of chapter sixty-one forestry, once a plan has been developed, it is submitted with the application, and its approval is valid for ten years. When a landowner enrolls in the chapter program, a lien is attached to the property that ensures that undeveloped land will continue to provide public benefits. The lien can be extended when sold, transferred to another, or transferred to another landowner. So removal from cha, the chapter. The first refusal option is triggered when an owner of land, chapter land, intends to sell the land or change the land to a residential, commercial, or industrial use. Additionally, first refusal is triggered if an owner of chapter land has withdrawn from the program and changes the land use within twelve months of the withdrawal. The first refusal option is not triggered when an owner of chapter land chooses to switch to a different program for the construction of a residence for an immediate family member, or the landowner chooses to leave the program but keep the land in agriculture, forestry, or recreational use for a one-year period from the last date taxed under chapter land. Or the landowner sells the property to a new owner who agrees to maintain the land use verified through an affidavit. Notice and action: Under the requirements of chapter land, if a property owner is going to convert the land to another use, the municipality's first right of refusal option is triggered. The owner of chapter land must notify the town of that intent, which triggers a process which the town must exercise within a hundred and twenty days from the notice and complete the purchase within ninety days of the notice to acquire. The town also has the ability to transfer the first refusal option to an eligible conservation organization, such as a land trust or state conservation agency, who must acquire the land within ninety days. The Board of Selectmen Lands Policy and Process, Number thirty-five, sets forth the procedure the town will take when presented with a property that is brought forward to be removed from the chapter and the town's right of first refusal. The process that are in place now: When the issue of chapter land changing was identified some months ago, the planning board added a question to their application, asking if the property is in chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, or sixty-one B. If so, the applicant should indicate so, this is the first flag for the project. The planning board can then proceed with the hearings and other procedural steps for the project, and if appropriate, issue a decision with the condition that the notice to proceed will not be issued until the applicant has satisfied the removal requirements for chapter land. A property does not have to be released from a chapter designation until the use of the land changes. The issuance of a decision by the planning board can be held open for two years with the annual extensions, as long as the board is agreeable to the same, with the property remaining under chapter. Additionally, if a project needs a building permit and the notice to proceed has been issued, if applicable, the assessor's office looks at all building permit applications as a further check for any outstanding issue. One snag in the system is, if a project is a land lease or a cash sale, it may be possible for the lien record on the property not to be discovered during the buyer's due diligence search. The assessor would then become aware of the sale or change of use after the fact, and remedial steps would have to be initiated. Mass Woods, a part of UMass Amherst linked below, provides a plethora of information for chapter programs. That's the first issue that he's here with. Would you like me to go on and finish the second one, and then you can ask questions, or ask questions of it now?
Let's ask questions now.
Okay.
There's a lot to take in. So what happened?
Specifically to the Gunther property, it was discovered quite a while ago that that project should have come for first refusal, and Ms. Chicorini had made several outreach attempts to the landowner, saying, "You need to pull this parcel out of chapter." That person apparently was uncooperative, or not diligent in doing what he should do. What ended up happening to trigger them to do something was, is as the chapter land came out, a new tax bill was issued, because the value of the land went up. And that caught that owner's attention and got him to the table.
So, and this is just, what really could have happened is if the town wanted to be sticklers about this, we could have exercised our option, bought the property for the land value with the solar farm on it.
I, I can't speak to what the penalties are, or what that is. What I, my, my mission was, is to understand how our process was working, and if our process was working properly, and, and how, like, learning about marijuana, a lot of other things in this community, if we're doing the process right and what it, and what it is. And as soon as, you know, the assessors noticed that this had happened. Now, this was also a lease, land lease, so there was no sale. So that's why that sentence is in this project about, you know, if it's a cash sale now, you know, a large piece of property in a cash sale, that might be tough. But twenty acres may be possible for some people, but a land lease does not trip anything to happen at the registry of deeds. It doesn't trip any title search by the landowner, because the landowner is the landowner. So, you know, we, we work with the planning board to get that box on the, on the application. The building permit did go through the assessor's office. They initialed it, the map, lot, and block. Maybe that's when that first caught their attention, and they were doing something. But from time to time, we all make mistakes or miss things, so.
They're usually looking for the sale, is what they're looking for.
The problem, the thing that I, and I spent a lot of time talking to Ms. Chicorini, you know, and it's a deep subject. She said to me, you know, chapter fifty-nine, which is tax laws about this thing, and chapter six, chapter, the chapter section, sixty-one A and B, is about this thing. So there's a lot of nuances in it. This UMass paper that I, Mr. Scanlon gave me too, and the link we provided for you, is, is a whole site all about chapter and all those things, so. You know, we're exercising, we, we know. You know, you have a dedicated staff here that really knows their properties and has, you know, flags. We were working through a process with three solar farms that coming, coming through. Planning board had a meeting last Wednesday night, and there were three items on their agenda for recommendation on, on chapter lease. So those will be coming to you sometime.
Ms. Noble?
I had a couple of questions regarding notice and action. Says here, the owner of chapter land must notify the town of that intent, which triggers a process which the town must exercise within a hundred and twenty days from the notice and complete the purchase within ninety days of the notice to acquire. So if the town is notified, but does not exercise that right, it becomes null and void, is that correct?
That would be a legal question, and I'm not going to try and answer.
Okay. Second question. The town also has the ability to transfer the first refusal option to an eligible conservation organization, who must acquire the land within ninety days. So again, I would have the same question. So, again, I would have the same question. If the town transfers that first refusal option to an eligible conservation organization such as a land trust or preservation, and that option to acquire the land within 90 days is not completed?
So, I, what I would surmise those dates are about is not tying a landowner up indefinitely while you are trying to exercise this right.
Okay. And I was reading the, the open space plan that was put together back in 2017, Todd. I read that. Hundred and fifty-some odd pages. What I found interesting is, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's approximately 4,300 acres of open space in Charlton?
Ms. Noble?
Yes?
My brain is on school water.
Okay.
So, I really, I wasn't prepared for an open space question.
Okay, I guess I'm wondering how much of Charlton comes under the umbrella of 61, 61A, 61B? How much is under the umbrella of open space?
That would be a question that I could ask the principal assessor, because that land is coded differently and has acreage attached to it.
Right.
So, we could come up with that number, but I'm not, you know, cognizant of that number right now.
Okay. I would be very interested in that.
You're welcome.
Is that it?
For now, yes.
Karen?
I don't know that everyone understands the benefit of 61A, and I'm not the person to give the history of that. Perhaps you are, Mr. Chair? The benefit versus, you know, the valuation of, right, when it comes out, the cost, give like an example of an acre that's in it, an acre that's out of it with...
So, I will tell you that what chapter land does is that it gives a lowered value to the property, because you are farming, agricultural use, forestry, which is growing the crop, trees, it's just sort of a slow crop, and open space recreational, doesn't mean, and I found this out, and as I was doing this, we just looked at a parcel on King Road that's going to come through the process, that's open space recreational. It doesn't have to be public. It's sort of a, as I read this other document from, you know, UMass Amherst, it's open land preserved in its natural state, or maybe we just cut hay on it once a year.
Yes.
So, it's, it's keeping land from development, and it's making it affordable for the landowner to keep the land out of development. But henceforth, when you come out, there are some rollback taxes. There is a 10-year period where there's a penalty. If you've been in for more than 10 years, then there's no penalty, but that's, you know, all in the weeds of the nuances of how and when it was put in, and what section you are in, and when you decide to come out, what those penalties are.
Yeah, it's my understanding, through the chair, that there is public open space, private open space preservation, and that it's delineated into sections that are developable, if that's correct?
Okay.
Not able to be developed, and some that's kind of in a gray area.
So, you know, there's another, and a jump to the Gunther property, which was being formed under a flexible subdivision, and Charlton's flexible subdivision law says that 25, or regulations, says that 25% of the raw land must be preserved as permanent public open space. And Worcester Land Trust was the group that was going to take that space, and that's an issue that the planning board is working through right now, because a site plan, a flexible subdivision, was granted. That applicant is asked to withdraw that site plan, and that was an interesting discussion at the last planning board meeting, where Mr. Novak, Colin Novak, came and expressed his concern about the amount of energy and staff time that that trust had put into coming to this agreement, and we're working with some advice of council to see what should happen with that. The Midstate Trail also runs through that property, and there was some alignment, realignment of the Midstate Trail through public open land that makes things easier than having the Midstate Trail from, I was talking to Todd, I think, and he was telling me, it was sort of formed on a handshake a long time ago. And we're trying, as it works our way through our community, to memorialize where it is and have the proper deeds easements or open space attached to it, so that it would be preserved open, so.
Okay. I would be very interested, though, to find out the timeline of what happens after the deadlines expire under the section of notice and action. And I understand that the deadlines are put in place so that the property owner is not held up ad nauseam.
Right, that's, I can, I will inquire and do some research on that, and maybe just get a little report back to Ms. Craver that she can distribute to you, unless you need me to come back and...
No, 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 and no hurry, it's for my own education. I appreciate it.
Karen? No? Any further questions for Mr. Meskis on Chapter 61? Kirk, thank you, and thank Deb and everybody else involved in this. It's always a sticky situation. It always has been. And thank the planning board for addressing, you know, their forms, so that we have a little bit more of, you know, the heads up that's coming. And now, Ms. Craver?
The next is a request to declare the vehicle as surplus. On June 13th, Mr. Meskis notified me that the 2006 Ford Ranger with approximately 72,000 miles, used by the Department of Inspektional Services, was placed out of service due to frame rail rot that is not economically repairable. They have removed all the salvage equipment from the vehicle and placed it in storage. The vehicle has been moved to 15 Old Town Road with the other surplus vehicles. The interim, in the interim, Mr. Meskis has made arrangements with Debbie Chikorini to use the assessor's car in the short term for inspections. He will be seeking a replacement vehicle from other departments or by capital purchase in the fall for town meeting. You are asked to declare the vehicle as surplus, so that it may be disposed of in accordance with applicable law and regulations.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Saffron?
Move that we declare the 2006 Ford Ranger as surplus, as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a little discussion.
Okay.
More on the replacement vehicle. Please, Kirk, look at a vehicle that is going to multitask for us, okay? What you do with it, plus, I believe, some of the stuff that the emergency management team uses the vehicle for, and please get the appropriate vehicle. I've seen some of the areas that the Ford Ranger had to go into, on some, on some of the things that you've had to do, and we're probably better off with more of a full-size pickup truck with four-wheel drive, and we're going to have a lot fewer problems. So, that's my take on that.
Okay, we also know that we're a green community, so we have to align that vehicle as a non-emergency vehicle with the green community requirements, so.
They meet 'em. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to send the Ford Ranger to its resting spot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, just if I could take a moment while I'm sitting here, you probably all have noticed by the, the new carpet smell, which we tried to air out today, that we are working on the carpet replacement project for the town hall. It's been something we've been sort of shuffling down the road for a while. The south hallway, we knew had asbestos-containing tiles under it, so we arranged for proper abatement of that on Friday, going into Saturday if necessary, so that was all abated while there was no one in the building properly, and the tile wasn't going to come up off the subfloor, so the subfloor was all removed, and a new subfloor. I got a contractor in here quickly to get the new subfloor in, so that we can keep the carpet guys moving along. It's been a little bit of a struggle keeping, you know, things moving around here, but there's enough frustration, I think, with town offices being closed some days to, we, Ms. Craver and I had talked about, and she was, had talked to you folks about, closing the town hall for one day, an additional day, and we, and I said, "No, I think we might stretch it into another Friday, just because of the south or the north wing hallways are a little difficult," but I'm working with the purveyor to, you know, keep us moving and keep the project going and keep the citizenry happy.
Thank you very much.
Before Mr. Meskis leaves, I'd just like to say a special thanks to his leadership and guidance on this and his work. He's been watching this. As you know, he has many duties, and that he continues to assist us in our building projects is above and beyond what was called for, so thank you very much.
And I'll say thank you back for providing me with the local inspector, who has taken quite the load off and has allowed us to process permits much more quickly, sometimes not quick enough. A guy dropped one off yesterday, called yesterday afternoon and wanted to know if it was ready yet. Contractor called today, "And is it ready yet?" And it's like, "We're miracle workers, but not quite."
Thank you.
Thank you. It's looking great.
Ms. Craver?
Yes, sir.
Green Gold Group?
Yes, sir. We've been notified by James McMahon, the attorney for Healthwise Foundation Incorporated, that they are changing the name of, from Healthwise Foundation Incorporated to Green Gold Group. He explained the purpose of changing the name is due to the potential intellectual property issues regarding other entities named in the form of Healthwise, and wanted to avoid any potential complaints in that regard. They also had some objections from other municipal officials in other towns they're pursuing licensing in, that the name implied the provision of medical services, which they do not offer. He also states that Rafael Arnov's new additional role as the Green Gold Group's CEO, hence his inclusion as the signer for the group. Former director, Mr. McKeon, has resigned from the organization due to health reasons. The amendment also contains provisions to protect the town in the future from any effects to limit or end payments to which is entitled under the original remuneration agreement. These provisions include increasing the payment to the town from 2% to 3%, and clarifying that this payment is in addition, in addition to the state-authorized excise tax approving the town by, approved by the town meeting. Agreeing that the payments will be made for as long as allowed by law, and that if any court or agency determines that the period of the contract cannot be indefinite, the contract will be renewed for successive five-year terms. Since the original agreement contained a certification that there are no suits or claims that could impact the town's ability to fulfill its obligations under the host community agreement, we have added explicit language that discloses pending litigation and the recent town meeting votes. Attorney McMahon could not be here tonight. We had a communication.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and he, he did work with Jonathan. Jonathan has agreed and approved this. So, I would recommend that you approve the agreement.
Okay. Do we have any discussion on this? Do we have a motion for us? Let's do a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement with the name change from Healthwise Foundation Incorporated to Green Gold Group Incorporated, including the amendments therein.
One, two, three.
Yes.
Well, this was just a summary and synopsis. I hope that you've had an opportunity to read the one page with the agreement, so.
And I also spoke with Mr. McMahon.
Okay, good.
Okay, do we have a second?
So, it's the agreement that you're approving?
Mm-hmm.
Second. Okay, do we have discussion? We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I did speak with Attorney McMahon earlier today. He did express his regards and his regrets at not being able to be here this evening. There was a scheduling conflict. However, we do have a medical marijuana advisory committee meeting on the 27th of this month, that's two Mondays from now, and he will be there, and this will, of course, be on the agenda, and that meeting is open to the public.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. Chair, just to clarify, this is not a new agreement, this is just amending it and protecting the town.
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any other discussion?
He did say that there, that the word "Healthwise" has been used by other organizations, and once they realized that there was an issue with intellectual property law, they felt it was best to change the name so that they would not have any potential conflicts. And as they're about to start manufacturing and packaging, they had to change all their logos before this could go forward. That's one of the reasons for the name change. Healthwise is actually pretty common, if you look it up.
All right, so, with that being said, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to Epstein, because I was not around when this post-agreement was negotiated.
All right, three ayes, one abstention. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Craver?
Okay. Civic Plus contract, I'd like to hold.
Okay.
We're still working on the contract with town council.
Okay, very good.
Site technology technician, 78. Attached is a job description for the information technology technician, as recommended by technology committee, human resource director, and myself. This position is to provide first and second-level skilled technical and administrative duties in support of the technology operations for the town of Charlton, including but not limited to the support, execution, and maintenance of the town's server, network, desktops, camera system, and phone system operations, including hardware, software, and systems. Support for the town departments as assigned, and all other work that is logical to this position. Town meeting approved $60,000 for this position. You are being asked to approve the job description and to allow human services to advertise the position. I would recommend the board approve the job description and advertising. Also, I had a conversation with the HR director today, and we would be putting in the advertisement $25 an hour, plus or take, so that would come up to about $50,000, and then if we needed overtime, this would also be an hourly person, not a salaried person.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Saffron?
Move that we approve the job description and advertising.
Okay, but a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I think the technology committee for working on this is something we've been talking about for a while. It's just a need that's been so long in the works that we're finally executing it, and it's so much, it's so complex now.
This is, this is another one of Mr. Meskis's many asks that he wore, and we appreciate all the effort you put into it, Kirk. The system has just gotten much bigger than we can do on part-time and contract basis, and I think at the end of the day, the town is actually going to save money with somebody in-house rather than contracting out what we can't do, so.
And plus, all the things we wanted to accomplish with technology in public. This will help with that.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, scene none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. Attached is a copy of a request received by the planning board to modify the site plan approval submitted by Ted, by the Ted Group LLC, requesting approval to construct a 1,600 square-foot accessory garage associated with Ted's package store and variety store, and demolition of two single-family homes. The property is located at 27 Worcester Road, Charlton, and is listed as assessor's map 27B Block A Lot 7. Said property contains approximately 2.2 acres and is zoned community business. You are asked to review, and should you have any questions or comments, we will notify the planning board.
Does anybody have any comments for, or questions on Ted's modification?
It's a big garage.
Yeah.
Who owns the houses?
Ted, I think.
Okay.
Do you have, actually, the building commissioner is looking.
Yeah, I'm just familiar with the project, so.
Okay, so, are the houses owned by Ted?
Yes.
Okay.
So, these are the two houses on Maple Street. They were originally slated to be demolished as part of his improvement project, but he held on to them for a while, and the original site plan that was approved had an additional pad site there.
They have decided that the site is somewhat congested and that they would be better suited to have some storage for their onsite equipment, their tractor and plow and stuff for taking care of the parking lot. That's what's going in that garage. It's forty by forty, so the parking increases by ten spaces, which would have happened if they had built that pad site, but it will be available for the use now that all three buildings are, or all three sections that Ted owns, you know, the whole block.
Yeah.
They were originally, I think, seventeen houses in that block, and he acquired them over time to, to realize that goal that they've done well there with. So that's, that's what they're doing. They've also, as good storage they are, have asked the fire department if we wanted to train in them, and they're available for us to do some training and bashing around in.
Oh, very good.
We will not be burning them. It is a, a place that we wouldn't do that because proximity to Route 20 and, and all the congestion that would cause, but in the next month or so, before the buildings are demolished by his contractor, we're going to have the opportunity to, to go in them and be able to drag hose lines through and stuff. We, we got some kids, and they often ask the captain who's in charge, well, why can't we go into somebody's house and pull hose lines through? And he says, sure, let us bring our wet hose line into your house and bash about with our air packs into your nice sheet rock walls. Oh.
Good. Glad you get some use out of them. Thank you.
And thank Ted for allowing the fire department to use.
We will.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions on Ted's, the planning board?
It looks like it would trigger more stormwater management, but it seems that they're addressing that in the site plan.
Yeah. Ms. Craver? CMRPC?
Yes, sir. Attached is a letter from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission notifying the board that it is time to make the appointment as needed. The town has allowed two delegates and an alternate. The planning board makes one delegate appointment, which they have appointed Gene Vincent, and the Board of Selectmen makes the second delegate appointment as well as the alternate appointment. Previously, the board had appointed Peter Boyer as its delegate and Joseph Rorovich as its alternate. Due to time constraints within their employment, they are not able to attend the meetings. The openings have been placed on cable and the town's website. Delegates and alternates are a vital link with our planning commission that enables them to deliver support services, to complete for, to compete for discretionary grant funds, to identify community needs in transportation and land use, and to foster subregion cooperation through shared services and procurement. Does any, does the board have any recommendations?
I think because of my normal job and because it's chaired by some of my coworkers at CMRPC, I probably should not volunteer for this, so.
The meetings are in Worcester, correct?
Yes.
No.
Union Station.
I wouldn't mind being appointed unless anyone else sitting at the table would prefer to be.
I'd like to, but unfortunately, my work obligations prevent, prevent me from doing so.
All right. Do we have a motion to?
I move that we appoint Ms. Beewak as the delegate to the CMRPC.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you, Ken. It is actually pretty cool. You get a chance to see what's on, on the drawing board that Mass thought, two people from Mass thought.
Good networking, too.
Yeah, are heavily involved in it, and one of the things that we found out when, when there was all the problems at the Oxford-Cheltenham line on Route 20, how important it is to be there to lobby, you know, when, when these projects come up, because the tip list, which is the ten most important projects in the, in the CMRPC, that changes every year according to how much funding they have and stuff, and if you're not there to, to speak up a little bit, or you don't know, you're not, you're not receiving the minutes from them, you, you, your project can slide to the back without knowing. Alan was usually very, very good down at the planning board and keeping his eye peeled on what was going on there, so anyway. And if you have any questions about Billy Scanlon, the interim town plan, we'll fill you in, you know, but it's actually a lot of fun, so.
Thank you.
With that, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Craver, Board of Selectmen's goals and objectives.
You do have an alternate, we, appointment, we will keep that on going?
Yes.
If you, if we don't have anyone, I will, don't say it.
Don't, don't, don't.
Don't volunteer.
Kurt will volunteer for filling the gap. Fast break.
You could appoint me until we find someone else, and if Ms. Beewak lets me know that she can't make it, I could go down.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
And perhaps we should note again that the quarterly meetings and the dates are, they actually have the dates, that's why I was able to do it. September 13th, 2018, November 8th, January 10th, 2019, and March 14th, so.
So we'll keep that going, and maybe you could find someone that would be interested in going with you, too.
And there is good packing right there at the Union Station packing garage, very secure.
And they'll validate your parking.
Yes, and they validate.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next?
Yes?
As a reminder, the board normally holds their goals and objectives meeting in September at the Activity Center in Fort Dresser Hill. I would ask you to choose the date you wish so we can reserve the space. I would offer the following two dates that you could meet, Tuesday, September 4th at 6:30, or Tuesday, October 2nd at 6:30. HR Director is available for both of those dates. What are the board's wishes?
My preference is September 4th.
Okay.
Just get it sooner than, than later, and October 2nd is close to town meeting.
Okay. Deb, any preference?
I'm not sure I'm going to be around on the 4th. It's the Tuesday after a long holiday weekend.
Yeah. I'd prefer October 2nd, only because of schedules.
So.
We have more time to.
Go figure.
Just, and I, I will agree, because I'm probably going to be told that I'm not going to be around on the 4th.
See, yeah, yeah.
So I guess if we can agree. I know what Joe's thinking, that cramps the schedule at the back end a little bit, but and to try and get them done early enough.
I'm sure we can probably, if we need to for town meeting, if there's a workshop, we can piggyback, piggyback that.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm all set with October 2nd.
Okay. Can we, can we send some forms back and forth so we can start formulating ideas so when we come to the table on the 2nd, we're prepared to hit the ground running?
Absolutely.
Great idea. Thank you. Okay. Old Business.
I don't have a memo on this.
I know you don't.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Gerard wants to?
Oh, Mr. Gerard. Absolutely. Step up. How did we, how did we miss you?
I don't know. Good evening.
Good evening, Todd.
For those of you who do not know me, I'm Todd Gerard, your conservation agent. I'm also your stormwater go-to guy today. If you look outside, we are experiencing some less than desirable weather. If you've followed me lately, I was speaking on our MVP grant a little while ago on municipal vulnerability. Well, we are experiencing these vulnerable times right now. Right now, Stafford Street is in a critical situation of flooding. This floodwater has backed up Route 20. Today, the drainage systems on Route 20 were totally in failure.
Wow.
The road was not allowed to de-water itself, causing a severe traffic problem. I have expended all our town assets, the police department, the fire department, DPW. DOT is now coming to assist us. We are pumping down this water from the pond on Stafford Street through Caddy Brook at about 3,000 gallons per minute. Friday, I had estimated the water to be between three and five million gallons. I'm going to triple that today. The reason I'm tripling it is due to these large two, three, four-inch rain events that I'm getting over half hour, so today the, the water went up significant. One of the major problems that I'm experiencing is all of this flooding is due to beavers, beaver impact. I just want to inform the selectmen today what we got going on across town. We got a lot of flooding. I have a, a good, good grasp on what we're doing, but I really believe that in the future, we're going to have to look at my, my suggestions for municipal vulnerability planning and update this. But I just wanted to update the selectmen and the town, the townspeople of Charlton. A lot of people saw us out there today with the flooding all over town, and it's just not on Stafford Street. It's all over town. It's just that this is the area that's requiring all of our, all of our effort at this time. I'll be leaving here, going back out there, and you'll see me there again at four o'clock in the morning, probably to keep this pump running. So I just wanted to take this moment, update the town, tell them that we are still in a safe area. We're not going to lose any loss of life or property with the flooding that's going on, but we could experience some traffic problems, things like that, and we're trying to be very aggressive and solve the problem before it becomes larger than it is. And I didn't know if any of you guys had any questions for me.
No, but I want to thank you for working on this and making people safe and making the community safe.
Thank you.
So Todd, just one, one thing I think we want to address when we were at, when we were at our, one of the selectmen's meetings that we held over at the school, this was the topic, and we had, we had the people there to speak on it from the state level about vulnerability, what, what was assessed and everything else. One of the things that is going on over at Stafford Street is, is one of the things that they talked about. We have a pipe under the road that's corrugated metal that some of the neighbors who've been around for a while have said they can remember being in there prior to 1970. The problem with that type of pipe is that after the water goes down during the normal cycle during the year, you have no water in there. It starts to oxidize. So the best thing that can hap, be, that can happen for us right now is that it's some be, a beaver blockage in there. The worst thing is that we could have a collapsed pipe, which, and I believe the cut is fairly deep there to get the pipe out.
About 20 feet.
And these are the type of things that we're running into in town, and, and they, they do get expensive, so anyway, I figured I'd just expound on that a little bit, but thank you very much, Todd.
I really want to, I really want to thank the police, fire department, and DPW. I'm just one person. Without that team, I wouldn't have been able to get this done. I also have to thank Robin Craver for taking care of all the bills that I'm going to bring her with this stuff. We know Todd doesn't do finance. I just solve flooding problems. This is all hands on deck, and our team is really working well, and I'm glad to be part of it. So I just want to update you guys and keep you aware.
Just, just one more question, Todd. Last year, probably right around this time of year, we were talking about the beaver dams and how they were causing flooding in other parts of town, and I know you worked really hard with one of the neighboring towns to try and remedy this and get rid of them by whatever means necessary, because you were, you know, concerned about flooding, and now here we are, and you've just said that the beaver dams are exacerbating the situation.
Correct.
So what can, what can we do now? I mean, we were at this point a, a year ago, and now it's even worse with all the rains that we've gotten.
What I'm, what I'm prepared to do is, once I can get my head above water.
Yes.
And come back to the town hall, I'm going to utilize our GIS mapping system and come and prepare a map and show you all these vulnerable spots, and if we don't take action, what's going to happen? So one of the action steps that would have to be taken is to develop relationships with all the landowners who own the parcels that are being flooded that help impact our, our being town of Charlton's infrastructure. Develop a standard operational procedure, work with Board of Health and through Conservation, lower these water pools down. It may not have to be an eradification of beavers, but lowering this water down on these pools will be very, very essential. We're talking millions of gallons.
Right. And of course, these large pools of water are breeding ground for mosquitoes, which again is another Board of Health issue.
Which again leads to water quality issues and things like this.
Okay. So I look forward to getting that information back from you. Thanks so much for all you're doing.
Awesome. So if you don't have any other questions, I'm going to go back to Stafford Street, make sure our pumps are pumping.
Thank you.
And I will keep the selectmen up to date on what I'm doing through Robin Craver tomorrow.
Okay. Great.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, thanks, Todd. So, under Old Business, the town administrator's contract has come due six months ago, I believe. We, we told you that we would enter, enter negotiations with the town administrator and, and which we've been doing diligently more during the last month and a half or so, and we've come to what I consider, and I guess the majority of the board members consider, a fair and reasonable contract between the town of Charlton and the, and the town administrator. So I'm, I'm a little in the gray area here. How has this been done before, Joe? Do we usually go over the contract item by item, or, or what's the board's wishes?
I would just like to meet the contract, and then if we want to take, to get any action on it.
Okay.
Maybe we'll take action on it.
Then I will.
Okay.
Contract renewal dates between Robin L. Craver and the Charlton Board of Selectmen. The contract renewal date, if voted on, would be today's date. So the renewal dates are September 26, 2018, through September 25, 2021. It's a three-year contract. Most of the language in the contract stays the same, and I'll highlight the changes. Section two, term adjusts dates to reflect a three-year contract, which I just made, which I just said. Section seven, fringe benefits, change section to read automobile travel expense. Town administrator's duties require that you be on duty and available 24 hours a day. The town shall provide an annual automobile stipend in the amount of $7,500 to cover gas, maintenance, tolls, and parking. Under $10 per event, parking tickets over $10 event will be reimbursed as an expense for her personal car, or, at her option, she may have the use of a town car after her second year. Number four, add the following language to the contract. The town shall contribute $12,500 to the town administrator's deferred compensation plan, and, so that was an increase, what was the original?
$3,500.
$3,500.
$3,500.
So that's an increase from $3,500 to $12,500. Make a salary adjustment beginning July 1, 2018, to $145,000 a year. Add the following. The contract, the, the town administrator shall receive a 22% raise if she receives a satisfactory review. If the review is performed late, then the raise shall be retro to July 1 of the year following review year. Town administrator shall be entitled to one year's, one week's vacation buyback and wage, wage increases of 0% in the first year of the contract, 2.5% in the second year of the contract, and 2% in the third year of the contract. And I apologize if she passed those out, but I want to add it, please. So with that, this is what we've settled on, I guess, what the board's wishes.
I do want to discuss that, you know, to, to people just tuning into this, that there is, there could be some sticker shock looking at it, but I, I'm comfortable in saying that this is the going rate for town administrators, and that we have a well above average one who has lots of institutional experience, and I think we have, you know, we're getting our money's worth.
So I would also like to add my two cents worth to that. Deb, you raised your hand just.
No, 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 please.
But my two cents are that what we did was we created a spreadsheet with the help of the Human Resources Department, and we went over the towns that most, most likely fit in with the type, the type of town we are, the growth that we're having, and what the town administrators were being paid in those towns. What we found was at, at the initial standing of where the town administrator was, or the town administrator's position was. town administrator's position was, in comparison to the towns that we thought we fit in with, we were woefully low, especially in the salary item. And the board made a conscious decision that we wanted to make sure that we got up where we needed to be for that position. We do it with the police chief and the fire chief. We've done it with all the positions in town hall, including the town planner. And the town administrator's position needed a very hard look this time around, and that's what we did. So, Deb?
I wasn't prepared to speak, but I will.
Oh, I apologize.
No, no, that's fine. Well, we know I raised my hand over everything. No, I took a very logical look at the pay range for town administrators, and for somebody who has 12 years of experience with the same town, there was no comparison. There is no town out there that demographically and geographically matches Charlton that has a town administrator or a town manager that has held the position consistently for 12 years. So there almost is no comparison to Ms. Craver. Those are just the facts, you know? I don't need to sugarcoat them. This is just how it is. Town administrators bounce from town to town because they're always seeking that higher dollar amount, that better deal. That's how it is with these positions. We are very fortunate to have someone who has a history of 12 years with the town, and I felt that that should be acknowledged. In addition, we were paying a salary that was several tens of thousands of dollars below what new hires are getting paid, and that's very disingenuous to someone who's been here for 12 years. I support the salary increase I did before, and I will support it in the future.
Thank you, Deb. Anybody else? Okay. Do we have motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stafford.
We accept the contract as presented.
Do a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will be abstaining again, and it's primarily due to the fact that I've only been here for about two months, so.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Three, one abstention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. You're stuck with us for three more years?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for staying on.
Thank you.
I like working here.
Thank you.
Committee reports? None?
Just that the Marijuana Advisory Committee will be meeting on the 27th of this month. That's a Monday at 5:30 here at the town hall in the Board of Health room.
Okay. Thank you. For the selectman policy review, does anybody have anything?
No, John, but I did want to mention that, going back to committee reports, that we do have the first meeting date for the Sole Moratorium Review Committee meeting, and that's going to be on Tuesday, September 18, 7:30 PM, right here in the selectmen's meeting room. And I want to thank everyone who participated or will be participating in advance.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank the committee members for stepping up. Okay. Town administrators report?
I have a section on flooding, but since Todd did such a good job with that, I don't think I need to go forward with that. Blueberry Festival, the Charlton Blueberry Festival was held on the 29th of July, was an amazing success, thanks to all the volunteers and vendors, with a special thanks to Kristin Pirkton. She's been organizing the festival along with a dedicated crew of volunteers from the Arts and Activities Council for four years, with this year, I think, almost doubling the attendance. When I hear the total they raised, I will let you know, but it is clearly their main annual fundraiser. Also, congratulations to all the winners of the Blueberry Bake Off Contest.
Were you a judge again this year?
Which is my favorite part, because yes, I was. They do a great job. Public Safety Building, we have advertised the two bids, advertised two bids for the Public Safety Building. One, an owner's project manual called a manager called an OPM, with a due date of return qualifications, August 30, and the second one for design services with a due date to return qualifications on September 19. I'm also working with Overlook Health Systems to purchase a portion of the land for this facility. As you know, town meeting authorized the purchase of $179,000 for the purchase of approximately 20 acres. I asked town council to work with me on the draft, and we have, are going to be asking their council to draw up the draft PNS. Conflict of Interest Seminar, we have set up a conflict of interest seminar for Tuesday, September 18. The seminar will be held twice, once at 1:00 PM and the other at 6:00 PM, in order to allow all employees, elected officials, and appointed officials to attend. You are asked to email Mary no later than September 11 with what time you can attend. She has also been working to set up an open meeting law seminar, but as of now, there's no AG staff available for training. We also tried to hire attorney Cosgrove. She has received some information with links that you can go to, to watch videos on the open meeting law. This information will be going out to everyone as well, once it's complete. And I just want to reiterate to please let her know that you're coming, because we have to have at least 30 people to have this conflict of interest going.
All right, Dan.
Thank you. Wireless 911 calls. Chief Maxfield and Sergeant Cludier met with the State 911 Department regarding the operational impact of receiving wireless 911 calls directly into the Charlton Police Station. Currently, there are two classes of service for wireless calls. Phase one-type calls that have only a calling party's telephone number and no geospatical location associated with them, and are rerouted to the State 911 Call Center. At the call center, the appropriate location information is verbally extracted from the caller, provided the caller knows their location, and once a location is determined, it is then transferred to the appropriate jurisdiction. The second type of wireless call is Phase Two, which calls have a geospatical location information already attached to the call, allows the dispatcher center to precisely determine the caller's location within approximately 50 meters and substantiates the information the caller is verbally providing. The benefit of accepting these Phase Two calls directly into our call center is if anyone is in our boundaries of Charlton dials 911 from a cell phone, the call will automatically be routed directly to the Charlton Dispatch Center instead of going through the State 911 Center first. Phase Two call simply increases our operational efficiency and ultimately, our ability to provide better service to the public. Further, there is no cost associated with the change, since it is done through State 911 and service provider cell towers. In addition, because we would service these calls ourselves, we are eligible to receive an additional $12,500 per year in our State 911 Support and Incentive Grant. This changeover will occur in the next four to six weeks. Solar Appeal of Board of Assessors' denial for tax abatement. As you know, a solar development developer has been requesting a pilot rather than paying the taxes on the value of their large solar arrays, even though the town was assured when they built that they would not be seeking a pilot. I've spoken with the Director of Assessing to provide her assistance. Unfortunately, we had, unfortunately, we informed our state reps and had asked for clarification in the law, but no relief was given. A bill was created but not enacted. The town stands to lose over $1 million in tax revenue if we do not prevail. We have contacted special counsel, and I'm waiting to hear how the Board of Assessors' vote to proceed, and will keep you updated. This will most likely turn into litigation. Just to add a piece to that, there have been three towns that have gone to the ATV, and the ATV is ruling against them. They chose not to appeal. That will most likely happen with us. My guess is that those three towns didn't have at stake what we do, and maybe they only had one solar, so they were willing to do a pilot. For us, this is large enough, and I'm just telling you that we will probably go to litigation over this. And we actually believe that the ATV is making the wrong decision.
So, and just to remind the board, this isn't the first discussion that we've had about this.
Yes, correct.
We all knew that this was a possibility, that it was going to happen. The other thing I feel the need to tell the public is that there was legislation in this session to finish this. It was reported, it was enacted on and reported out of the Senate.
Right.
And this was frozen in the House. So if we could ask people to please contact their state reps and inform them that this has a high monetary value to Charlton and to the Charlton taxpayers' pocketbooks, that they please take up the legislation that was dropped in the House and get this passed so that there's clarification. Right now, what is happening is the lobbyists for the solar farms are spending money left and right to keep this thing tied up, and that's not fair to the good taxpayers of the Town of Charlton or other residents of the state. They need to pay their fair share.
Unfortunately, I don't think it's up to our representatives specifically, but more of the leadership on taking it up.
I believe that's the case, but I think that because this crosses the aisle on both sides, and both parties have enough people that are being impacted with this, I believe if our state reps add their voice to the other people that are, you know, that are being impacted by this, leadership will have to do something. And you are correct, it is at the leadership level that this is tied up. The squeaky wheel gets the grease.
The other thing that people should know is that just because the session appears to be over, it doesn't mean that they won't come back for a special session, which I have been told that they will be doing very shortly to take up those matters that should have been addressed during the regular session, but were not, so this doesn't have to wait until after the next election. This can be taken up beforehand.
Right. That would be great. Then the calls would be even more important now to move, to ask them to move.
Absolutely.
Move it forward. The other comment that we did have was when we discussed the possible litigation, was that whether we prevail or whether we lose, we certainly will become a test case, and because we have so much solar in this town, it may help to move it forward and give more credence to the municipalities versus the lobbyists.
Oh, absolutely, because if there is no law on the books, then whatever is case law will become the law.
Sorry, Deborah.
Okay, so that's that one. Special Town Meeting, as you know, on August 1, there was a special town meeting where Article 1 did not pass, and Article 2, a general bylaw to ban marijuana in town, did pass. Both articles have been sent to the Attorney General's office by the town clerk for review. Since the planning board said they would start reviewing the zoning bylaw regarding marijuana known as Article 27, and make recommendations for changes at the next special town meeting, I asked the AG if they would please forward their review of Article 27 from the annual town meeting. Regarding a ban, we are reviewing what possible liabilities may incur to the town, given that the town has entered into two host agreements. I expect council to provide a report at your next regular meeting. Jerry Russell Complaints Update, as you know, Mr. Jerry Russell has made several complaints against the town regarding public records. I received two letters from Secretary Galvin's office, Public Records Division, regarding complaints made on June 7 and the 28. Both letters stated they were closing the cases. The June 7 complaint was regarding executive session minutes, where I informed both the state and Mr. Russell that we had provided existing documents and forwarded new documents as they were created. This is the instance where Mr. Russell complained that the draft minutes did not contain much of the dialogue. In an effort to be transparent, the board asked Mary Devlin to do the long form of minutes, and she captured most of what was said. Those minutes were reviewed by you and forwarded to him in draft form, as well as signed. The state considers this complaint closed without taking any action. The second complaint is more complicated. Mr. Russell made a massive document request, in which he later admitted he worded poorly. The request was revised, and the cost came down significantly. He asked the board to reduce the fee, and you voted to reduce it to $300. He has now informed us that he is objecting to the $300. I spoke to the state today, and they have not, they have not actually received a complaint from Mr. Russell, so I don't know the status. The original, when I say didn't receive a complaint, meaning he hasn't acknowledged the $300 to them, that he's received an answer, and he's still objecting. I spoke to the state, they haven't received the complaint. The original letter from the state informed me that they were closing the case, assuming he had agreed to the reduction. On another note, when I spoke to the state, I informed them that the letter had a statement that was incorrect, namely, Mr. Russell was not at the meeting, because it appears that two of the three front doors were locked, and Mr. Russell only tried the two that were locked, choosing not to try the door, which is now the main entrance. Mr. Russell texted me, and I immediately opened the doors that were locked as we tried to have them all open when meetings are in session. He was not here for the vote. I reminded the state that I had texted him the amount, but never said he was here. I also agreed to send him a formal letter telling him of the reduction. The parking lot was full, and I believe we had FIDCOM members, town council, the moderator, residents at that meeting. Mr. Russell also said that he made a mistake when he sent the open meeting law violations to the selectmen and planning boards with the heading "From WTG News." He says that he's recused himself from any connection with the TNG regarding this matter. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for the town administrator?
Do you think that we will be getting this open meeting law request for documentation resolved within the next week or two?
The ball is in Mr. Russell's court, so I do not know.
So he needs to respond to the $300 payment that you sent to him in a letter?
He needs to, my understanding is that if he is not in agreement with the $300, that he needs to do something with the state to go further, since we sent the letter stating a reduction.
Okay, so then he would need to go to them to ask that it be reduced again to zero, and then they would review it again?
Then they would review it again, and then he could peel it again if he wanted.
Okay.
Any further questions for the town administrator?
Did Mr. Russell know we were going to talk about this tonight? I don't remember if it was on the agenda again.
I'm not talking about it. I'm just giving you a report on what we've got.
Okay. Answer questions, but.
Is that it?
That's it.
Other business unknown at the time opposed? No?
Motion to adjourn?
We have motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.